We will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, General District Courtroom, Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Banks Street, Chatham, Virginia. Call to order and roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Hagelmann.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Barksdale.
Present.
Mr. Warren.
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items to be added to the agenda, board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add the nomination of the Bannister District Representative to the public, Pennsylvania County Public Library Board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor to adding that to the agenda, raise your right hands. Okay. Mr. Blackstock.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add closed session after item 40 county administrator. The board of delegates listed in the packet. And it will be items A through B. Authority 2.2, dash 3711A5, Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Subject matter, project solution, purpose project update, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industries interested in locating or expanding facilities in the community. For all, is that for all four items?
For all.
That's for all four items, A through B. Item B. Y'all work with me here, the county administrator can do this and it's ranked on his right. Authority 2.2-dash-3711A5 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Subject matter, project box, purpose project update. Item C, Authority 2.2-dash-3711A5 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Subject matter, project TAP, purpose project update. Item D, Authority 2.2-dash-3711A5 of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Subject matter, project robot, purpose project update. So what we need, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of adding that amendment to the agenda, say, I'll raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. All right, now can I get approval of the agenda?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda and amend it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Hagelmann. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. The chair with the blessings of the board would like to amend the order of the agenda tonight and proceed to consent agenda and then we will return to hearing of citizens. Consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Hagelmann. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one thing, it's just a comment. I believe item D, looking at the organizational chart for the county, it seems to me that the county administrator has the authority to approve this particular job description. So, that's just a comment I wanted to make, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Seeing no other, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We do have one part of the consent agenda that we want to recognize in particular tonight, and that's the certificates of recognition for our career and technical students, the Skills USA 2017 Competition Awards. Before I come down and have these students come forward along with Ms. Rigney and her faculty, I don't see Dr. Jones here tonight, but if he's here, I want him to come down also. I can't say enough about these students. They went and won state championships and then went off on a national level and competed and just did the whole region proud. And we certainly are very proud of each and every one of you, and it just shows again what is, that our best asset is still out there and we've got a very bright, bright, bright future here in Pennsylvania County because of young people like this. So, we will be reading their names and also mentioning the staff and we'll give Ms. Rigney a moment to say a few words if she would like, but I'd just like to ask all of you to please come forward and Mr. Smitherman is going to read these. Also, DCC is here, which is an additional extension of the Precision Machine Program and then, of course, they go to the institute following that to the Hoss Center for wanted, ones that want advanced training. We're really blessed to have this in the county and it gives us a big advantage in economic development on a worldwide basis. So, I'd also like, because this has been a big project for the county and the region to promote these programs, I'd like to ask the entire board, if they don't mind, to please come down and greet these students and meet them as they come forward. Thank you, Mr. Smitherman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. First, we're going to recognize folks from Danville Community College, beginning with instructors Troy Simpson and Kevin Poole. If they're in the audience, they can come forward and greet their students. The first student to be recognized is Stephen Chambers, who placed first in CNC turning at the Virginia Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference and placed fourth in the nation in CNC turning at the 2017 Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference. Stephen Chambers.
He was not.
Artsen Fitzner, Fitzner, placed first in CNC Technician at the 2017 Virginia Skills USA State Conference and placed 16th in the nation in CNC Technician at the 2017 National Leadership and Skills Conference. Quinn Motley placed first in CNC Technician at the Virginia Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference and placed 16th in the nation in CNC Milling at the National Leadership and Skills Conference. And those are your Danville Community College students to be recognized.
Please, I'm holding, I'm screening here, so.
No, no. It's, it's.
Thank you.
Bye. Because she's got some other comments. Okay, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Got a few words to say, thank you all so much, appreciate everything you did.
I'd just like to thank the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County Career and Tech Center for helping some of these guys proceed to DCC and do such excellent job. And, of course, the DCC Educational Foundation for funding these guys in Louisville at the National Competition. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'll make this Rigney, bring those stars forward, please.
So, from the Pennsylvania School Division, we have instructors Rebecca Roberts, Principal, Principal Rebecca Roberts, Angela Rigney, who's the Director of the Career, Tech and Adult Education, and Justin Owen, the Precision Machining Instructor.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
The first student to be honored is Andrew Williams, who competed in the CNC Milling Specialist Category. In this competition, Andrew had to write several CNC milling programs, interpret prints and measure engaged parts. Andrew was the only competitor to receive a perfect score during his interview portion of the competition. He received gold at the state competition and placed 19th overall in the Nationals in the CNC Milling Specialist Competition. He is a 2017 graduate of Gretna High School and will be attending DCC this fall. And he's not going anywhere yet. Jacob Bowles competed in the CNC Technician Competition. He had to write CNC tuning and turning and milling programs, interpret prints and measure parts, all while demonstrating a theoretical knowledge of CNC machine configuring, setup and operations. Jacob received a gold at the state competition and placed 7th overall in the Nationals in the CNC Technician Competition. He is a 2017 Gretna High School graduate and will be attending DCC this fall. Matthew Connor competed in the CNC Turning Specialist Competition, where he had to write turning programs, interpret prints and measure parts, all while demonstrating a theoretical knowledge of a CNC machine. Matthew received gold at the state competition and placed 8th overall in the Nationals in the CNC Turning Specialist Competition. He is a 2017 graduate of Chatham High School and will be attending DCC this fall. All three of these students are 2017 graduates from the Precision Machining Program at the Career and Tech Center, under the instruction of Mr. Justin Owen. Mr. Owen accompanied them to the national competition, he coached them and encouraged them along the way. Students from the Precision Machining Program at the Career and Tech Center have competed for the past three years. During the short time, the program has produced eight state winners and seven that have had the opportunity to compete at the national level. Jenna Rowland received a gold in Job Skill Demonstration Competition. In this competition, students demonstrated career objective in an occupational area that is first taught in their career and technical education classroom. Jenna demonstrated how to properly use an ALCA sensor device. Presentations and demonstrations should last between five and seven minutes. Jenna Rowland is a junior at Chatham High School and a student in the Criminal Justice Program at the Career and Tech Center, under the instruction of Ms. Toni Morris. Taylor Jones received a silver for job skills demonstration at the state competition. Heath Dosse received gold in the Industrial Motor Controls Competition at the state level. In this competition, Heath had to demonstrate knowledge of electrical principles, equipment and industry codes and standards as it relates to the design and installation of motor control systems. Additionally, he had to apply this knowledge by properly installing motor control equipment and associated enclosures, raceways, pilot devices and circuitry in accordance with accepted industry practice and national electrical code requirements. Heath is a 2017 graduate of Gretna High School and the industrial maintenance, in the Industrial Maintenance Electricity Program taught by Mr. Jim Pollard at the Career and Tyler Riddle and Seth Woodson both received a gold in mechatronic, in the mechatronics competition at state level. In this competition, students combined their industrial skills, mechanics, electronics and computer-based controls with a team-oriented approach to problem solving. Tyler and Seth placed 15th overall in the mechatronics competition. Tyler is a rising senior at Chatham High School and Seth is a rising senior at Tunstall High School. Both will be complete, completing the Industrial Maintenance Electrician Program at the Career and Tech Center under the instruction of Jim Pollard. Crystal Barrett received gold in Precision Technology Manual Machining at the state Steven Tony received bronze in Collision Repair Technology at the state competition. Lawrence Hilton received silver for first aid CPR at the state competition. And Kelsey Slammons, Slammons?
Sam.
Oh, it's spelled incorrectly, I'm so sorry. But it's correct on the certificate. Kelsey Sammons received bronze for first aid CPR at the state competition.
We gotta get a big roots, we're gonna turn around and get around the thing in the front. Me, Kelsey, gather around right here and look up that way and then get up there.
Luke, you go ahead. Russ, you got the big camera.
Yeah, y'all can get inside that podium, looks okay.
Yeah, kind of blocking out one there.
Hey, take a step to your right again, Bob. There, perfect. All right, let's practice right. One, two, three, four, one, there you go.
Thank you all. Thank you. Perfect balance, wow, Roger.
I do want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing our students this evening and the instructors on the hard work that they've done. You will see, we've got, you know, I'm very proud of what we've got going on at the Career and Technical Center, also the partnership that we have with Danville Community College. You're not going to find a finer program, partnership across this country. We're appreciative of all the support that the Board of Supervisors has given us in implementing our Precision Machining Program, both of our industrial maintenance programs, and look forward to bringing you more state and national award winners in the future and industry partners, hopefully to put these students to work. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Ms. Rigney. Okay, we'll move to hearing of citizens. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and district. We would appreciate your speaking into the microphone so your comments can be heard. The hearing of citizens format is not a question and answer session, but I assure you that the board will be listening to your comments. Each person making comments will have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have approximately one minute remaining to speak. I will call you in the order you signed up. First on the list is Mary Yates.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. Ms. Yates passes Amanda Yates.
If it's all the same to you, I'd like to wait and hear some of the other comments that are being made before I speak.
Rules say, according to order you've said, so you can speak or you can decline to speak altogether.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Dix, Deborah Dix, from my district.
I'm Deborah Dix from Blair's, Chatham. I signed up twice, I don't know if you let me speak continuously.
Two different subjects?
Yes.
Two separate subjects?
Yes.
Let's let you do this one, sit down, and then we'll bring you back, because we've got somebody after you.
All right, this one's about businesses in the county, and this is about RIFA. I know y'all are not RIFA, but speaking at RIFA is hard, it's not an, exactly an open session area. And then you get in a RIFA board in the northern part of our county, which I hoping will be more open. I'm hoping that citizens would be able to be on your board. The county, the state of Virginia has these RIFAs everywhere, and most of them do have citizens on their board, except Berry Hill. And it took us almost three years to be able to speak at Berry Hill, RIFA meetings. Then it's only, it's on an agenda. So I'm hoping that your northern county, if RIFA is approving that part, there would be more open session and it will welcome citizens on the board. And also, I'm going to talk about the pellet mill that's been presented throughout the county for the past two years. I think the first time I saw it was on the agricultural board, with secret names, of course, but when their secret names come out, it is about pellet mill. I was going to move to Wilmington area. I declined to move there because the area I was going through had a pellet mill. The air was awful, it smells terrible, I mean, and it uses lots of water. And also, another reason I didn't move to the Wilmington area is also because of factory animal farms. The factories down there are mostly hogs, and those things are being released into our rivers. And since the pellet mill is a huge water producer and user, hopefully, and that's been released into the Cape Fear River, which is so polluted now that you'd be best not even to drink that water, even after been going through the Wilmington's area. So I hope you don't pollute our waters and air anymore than it's already polluted, because E. coli is, is all over our county and our rivers and streams because of factory farming. I'm a DEQ water tester, and I have found E. coli being five times higher than it should be in certain creeks where animal waste is spread. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix. Next on, next on the agenda is Ms. Brenda Bowman, a past chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
Good evening, Chairman Warren, board members, good to see you, Mr. Smitherman, Mr. Hunt. My name is Brenda Bowman, and I reside in the Chatham Blair's District. I come before you tonight as the chairman of the Pennsylvania County Tourism Advisory Committee. Over three years ago, I began working with Lori Moran, the President of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, on a dream we both shared, a dream to see growth through tourism in Danville and Pennsylvania County. In 2016, that dream became a reality with the formation of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Tourism Advisory Committee. I personally thank you for appointing me to that committee so that I could continue with that dream. Several months ago, Mrs. Moran and I spoke before you and presented our three-year plan, which included the hiring of a full-time tourism coordinator. We spoke again at budget time, and your continued support, along with that of the city of Danville, has made it possible for us to hire a full-time tourism coordinator. We had hired a part-time staffer, a local young lady from Gretna, who graduated from Avret with a degree in communications, but like so many young people, she had left our area to find employment that needed her skills. Although she was a full-time employee with James City County, she wanted to come home, and we're so glad she did, and she took that leap of faith by applying for our part-time position. Just a few days prior to Mrs. Moran's passing, she promoted Amy. It's been a tough few weeks, as you can imagine, she promoted Amy to full-time employment practically on her deathbed. She wanted to make sure that that was being done. I'm enjoying working with this fine young lady and wanted to introduce you to her tonight. This is her first time at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and I ask that you make Ms. Amy Bowles welcome.
Thank y'all. Can you hear me? Thank y'all for all of your support, I appreciate it more than y'all can ever imagine. Everything is trucking right along and I hopefully can make y'all proud. Thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to seeing you in the future. Okay, Ms. Dix, please.
Deborah Dix, Blair's, Chatham. This is about the animal shelter, and thank everyone for opening that for us. I'm hoping that the animal control situation with the animal control officers, my suggestion is to take their numbers away from them, the telephone numbers that you call. If anyone calls that number, it should be traced through a computer system, so we have a track of the animals being picked up. At this time, we don't know what animals are being picked up, do we? I know you can't answer. But anyway, hopefully, somehow you have a call center, somehow you integrate these control animal officers' numbers in that, in that call center, so we know on Fridays when you pick an animal, that animal's going to be in that shelter. And also, the most horrible thing I've ever seen in my, maybe not my lifetime, because it's, is the video of that animal, of that dog's head being cut off to be sampled for rabies in an outside area. I know, I'm from Danville, and our animal people will try anything they can to save those animals that bite people. I had a dog that bit a child, but that child was in my house, they're not welcome, he just, she walked into the house and a dog protecting their area. That dog had license, of course, and rabies shots. So did this dog, had rabies shots. All I had to do was quarantine my dog in my house for 10 days. All that dog had to be done, it'd be quarant, you know, to be kept by itself for 10 days at the animal shelter. I don't know the whole, whole truth of that, but the video was awful. And I hope that that will come to an end. I hope there's a way to control these animal officers' calls, so we know when they get a call and they pick that animal up, it would go to the Humane Society, so the animal can be tracked and adopted out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix.
Am I able to show pictures?
Sure.
Passing them.
This is on my dog that was attacked at my home. I don't know where to start.
You start with Mr. Barksdale, he'll pass them down the line. Thank you.
I knew this, I've never done these. I'm not sure what county, what, I'm in Chatham, but I don't know the.
You don't know what district?
No, I don't.
We'll figure you're in the Chatham or Bannister District, that's Mr. Barksdale.
I think it's Bannister, I think. Is that it, Bannister?
All right, so, Callens, Graydon. Callens, Graydon, okay, well, we, you're up here, you can get.
I just know I'm somewhere in Chatham.
I think you need to ask the county attorney, when you present pictures, they become the county's property, is that correct?
Do you want these pictures back or you want them rightfully?
Um, you can keep them.
Okay.
I can make, I can make more.
That's the way it's always done, I've always heard that comment, that's what I mentioned.
Yeah, I can make more.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Okay, um, let's see, um, I don't know how to, my dog was attacked on June 24th, 2017, at our home by our neighbor's two pit bulls, and we called 911 on that Saturday. No sheriff or animal control showed up at our home until Monday afternoon. Pete, um, then we had a neighbor that seen the dogs running loose on that day and can ID them. Pete Boswell and Justin Jones only went to their home one time, she wasn't there and they never went back. She could positively ID the gray and white pit bull as one of them that was running loose that did attack my dog. My husband came there to see the aftermath, they were chewing on my dog underneath our Tahoe, and when he went to run them off, they came after him, they were guarding their kill. And if he hadn't got his gun, they would have gotten him. And this is not the only time these dogs have been after people. Back in Jan, in December, the same neighbor, the dog viciously went after her and her son. I'm just wanting something done, I, I just don't understand why, why the dogs weren't picked up on that day, why it took so long for anyone to come out. I just don't want a child or a person to get injured, because, you know, they were really, they did a lot of damage to my dog, and I would hate to see that done to a child. And I just, and I don't know who's working on the case now, because Pete Boswell, I don't know, no one's even contacted me back, so I don't know what animal control officer is working on it, or, I don't know, I want to press charges, and I was told I can't ID the dogs. And I found a company, because one of the dogs messed on my front porch, and they can do DNA, I just needed a swab of the two dogs, and I can prove they were in my yard. DNA. I just needed a swab of the two dogs. And I can prove they were in my yard. I just, I don't know. I just want something done to make the neighborhood safe again. I mean, because I'm afraid he walked in my mailbox without my husband having a gun and, and guard me try to go there. And so that some of the neighbors, am I running out of time?
You are, ma'am.
Okay. Anyway, I just want something done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Hudson.
Ms. Barbara Hudson. My name is Barbara Hudson, and I live in Callens-Gretner district. I moved here about 10 years ago, and I wasn't sitting on my front porch more than a few 10 minutes when my neighbors came down and said, "We've gotta do something about this." And that began my, my history of bringing lawsuits against the county. What was bothering these people on my road was the rental of a travel trailer as a residence. And these people had gone to Otis Shelton to complain about the zoning violation, and what did Mr. Shelton do? Nothing. What has Mr. Shelton done? Nothing recently. In fact, Mr. Shelton, who is the director of zoning, handled the case, and I'm not trying my case here, but what he did was, he provided with the person who appealed one of his decisions to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And after they heard the, the issue before the zoning appeals, you have 30 days in which to appeal. So Mr. Shelton got the final order, and he mailed it to my client on the 30th day by first-class mail. So it got to my client 33 days after the final order was entered, which made it impossible for him to appeal. This has been Mr. Shelton's practice. He just sent me, he didn't send me, he sent to, um, he sent it to the BZA board members. Mr. Warren received a copy. David Smithelman received a copy. Greg Sides received a copy. And Mr. Hunt received a copy. I didn't receive a copy, because I hauled his ass into court on a, when I was in law school, the, I had a lecture, a wonderful lecturer who said, "When there ain't nothing to be done, there's always something you can do." And it's a petition for rid of mandamus. And I brought Mr. Shelton into court, which prompted this letter to everybody, which is, I think, a disgraceful letter telling them what I had no right to do. You talked about making, giving raises to county employees. Well, Mr. Boswell is a very good example of where you need to pay more attention to the conduct and to the job performance of your employees, including Mr. Boswell and Mr. Shelton. I could make, I get calls every week, at least once a week, about people complaining about being harmed by their, their, their local government. And I think it's a shame that we don't have decent local government that takes care of their people instead of harming them. And let me give you an example. For about, almost a year, I had clients, including Mrs. Dix, who were suing the Board of, the Agricultural Development Board to get a copy of their minutes. They're a public body, and public bodies need to keep minutes. And they said they didn't have any minutes. So during, during that, all that time, they didn't, we were in court multiple times on that, when we finally got a copy of the minutes, 10 years' worth of minutes. And as we went through the minutes, we realized that Mr. Barksdale and Mr. Blackstock had been the Board of Representative members on the Agricultural Development Board. And at those meetings, the Agricultural Development Board had their minutes and read the minutes and approved the minutes. So Mr. Blackstock and Mr. Barksdale both knew that the Agricultural Development Board were keeping minutes, and never said anything to us, and never said anything to the judge to, to, to stop this, this ongoing problem. And I think that the issue with Mrs., with Laura at the, at the county pound needs to be investigated thoroughly.
Appreciate it. Comments, but your time's up. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Next is Ms. Catherine East.
Hello again. I'm Catherine East. I'm in Mr. Hagerman's, Callens-Gretner district. I'm here on behalf of the SPCA of Pennsylvania County. You guys probably know my face by now. And I'm addressing the, the shameful video that had to be released before anybody would start taking action. I'm, the SPCA, members of the SPCA, members of the public have gone to several Board of Supervisors and a couple of different county administrators telling them about this problem with animal control. And it's been going on for 10 years that I know of, and from other people, 40 years altogether. It's, um, it's been swept under the rug, and nothing had been done about it. And it's really shameful that this video had to come out before somebody would do something. It's a, it's a black eye on our county, and the world is looking at it. And it's gone viral. It's all over the country. It's all over different, different countries, Europe, and, and they're watching to see what you're gonna do next, as am I. I don't want you to let us down again. I want you to fix this problem. I want you to get it right. The SPCA wants you to fix it, wants you to get it right. We have our people here again. As you know, we can pack a room. We would like you to please quit paying and harboring criminals. We would like you to hire responsible, humane animal control officers that will follow the states of the law and not make their own laws. And thank you for listening.
Next on the agenda is Stephen East.
My name's Steve East. I'm with the SPCA. I'm also in Callens-Gretner district, Mr. Hagerman's. It, it has been an up, a roller coaster for us getting the new pound, getting a shelter manager, who gave a hoot about the, the dogs and the animals, the cats. And, and you guys stepped up to the plate. You did really well. And Parkman, Mr. Smithelman addressed the, last time we're here, when they allowed, gave the contract to Lynchburg Humane Society. He, he addressed two things. He says, "We're gonna do the shelter, and we're gonna modernize animal control." And, and what I forgot to say when I spoke was, "We're gonna watch that." Because we're interested in that. I've had the, uh, I know, pleasure, but I've had the task over the last five or six years to go to the pound to get dogs, usually every Friday. When Mr. Boswell was running the pound, if you didn't get them on Friday, they didn't make it till Monday. That's a fact. If it was a holiday, we would call for two weeks before the holiday on Thanksgiving and say, "When are you gonna give us the dogs? I know you're full." And the next Monday after the holidays, he had zero dogs in the pound. All right? So this has been going on for a long time. And my task was to pick up the dogs, take them and get them vetted, and get them stored safely, and get them to a shelter, a reputable shelter, or an adopter that would take these dogs and give them homes. And we did that for thousands. But every time one of our people went there, if Mr. Boswell's there, you got a ration of crap every time. You're a rescue. You're worth nothing. You're an idiot. And I had to listen to this because somebody called me names on the internet. Well, I'm sorry. If you're an officer of the court and officer of the law, people can call you names. It ain't, it shouldn't be anything off your, your skin, off your butt. But we need to straighten that out, and I applaud your efforts to do this, and I hope you continue it. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
That concludes citizens' comments from hearing of citizens. Public hearing, rezoning cases. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Board of Supervisors, have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, we are responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I will open the public hearing for case number one. Mr. And I'm opening at 7:43.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case 1, R-17-021, E and E of Virginia LLC has petitioned to rezone a total of 8.35 acres, four parcels of land located off of State Road 668, Grit Road, and on Nanlutz Road in the Stanton River District, from R1 Residential Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, then all use is listed under Section 35-178, or a permitted use. The planning commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet, and Mr. Chairman Barry Hall is here to represent the petition.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
No, that's a wrong name.
I thought so.
Yes, Mr. Eads. Mr. Eads is here to represent...
Mr. Eads.
Yes.
You have anything to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Board's pleasure. We have no citizen signed up for this case.
Don't close the hearing.
Don't close the public hearing at 7:45.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-17-021, I make a motion that we rezone from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision to A1 Agricultural District, four parcels of land off of State Road 668, Grit Road, on Nanlutz Road in the Stanton River Election District. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. I viewed the property, and it doesn't make any sense at all why it wasn't agricultural to start with. The parcels are shown on our records, so it's listed in their board packet under the GPA numbers, 4.37 acres, 3.04 acres, .68 acres, and .26 acres.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barbara. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Mr. Eads, your property has been rezoned. I will open the public hearing for case number two at 7:47. Mr. Sides.
Case 2, R-17-022, K.S. Guyer has petitioned, petitioned to rezone 1.85 acres from R1 Residential Subdivision, Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General. Parcell is located on US Highway 29 North in the Chatham-Blairs Election District. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all use is listed under Section 35-365, or permitted use. The planning commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your board packet. And Mr. Chairman Lynn Williams, Mr. Guyer's sister, is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Williams, please come forward. Do you have anything to add?
Um, no, not from the last time. Everything stays the same.
Hold your place just a second. Any, no citizen signed up, so I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rezone case R-17-022, from a property on the, on 29 North in the Chatham-Blairs district, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to B2 Business District General, on 1.85 acres.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? We're going. This is in my district, and I have been out and looked at the property and all. And I'd just like to say to Ms. Guyer and her staff, we appreciate that she's looking to expand and grow her business there, and she does a great job. And I'm sure she's probably in there doing surgery or something tonight.
She is.
She's, she's a wonderful asset to our community, as is her staff. Having said that, I don't, we have nothing else. Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Property's been rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing for case 3 at 7:50. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case 3, R-17-023, Larry and Myrtle Barrett have petitioned to rezone 37.09 acres located on US Highway 58, South Boston Road, in the Dan River Election District, from A1 Agricultural District to B2 Business District General. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all use is listed under Section 35-365, or a permitted use. The planning commission, with no opposition, recommended granting the petitioner's request. Staff summary is enclosed in your packet, and Mr. Chairman Larry Barrett is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Barrett? No citizen signed up. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything to add?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'll close the public hearing at 7:51. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, this being in my district, and I know this family, in the case of number 3, R-17-023, having walked this property right along with my planning commissioner, representative, this should have been done a long time ago. He deals with heavy equipment, working on heavy equipment, and I see that it fits in the comprehensive plan very nicely. So I make the recommendation that we turn this from A1 to B2.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Barbara. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Thank you. Property's been rezoned. Unfinished business, item number seven, expenditures to refunds from June 2017. Motion made by Mr. Barksdale and seconded by Mr. Davis last month, that it has met the 10-day layover requirements. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. New business, item number eight, contract award renovations of Mount Herman Library. Mr. Smithelman.
Thank you, sir. We're pleased to present bid tabulation for bids received for the Mount Herman Library renovation project. The apparent responsible bidder is Daniel Builders LLC with a bid of $221,950. It's $221,950. Unfortunately, that bid is not quite $52,000 over our budget. And this evening, we are asking you to actions to approve this and award this bid to Daniel Builders LLC, and also to appropriate $56,950 from the current budget, not from, in your, in your packet it says unappropriated funds, instead we would like to make it work in our existing budget. So that's why the 10-day layover was applied.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award the contract to Daniel's LLC for $221,950 and appropriate $56,950 from our current budget.
Second. Any motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis? Any discussion?
I probably should need to make that motion, say, "And appropriate $56,950 additional dollars to our, from our current budget."
Can I give a...
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Happy reading.
Thank you, thank you. We're, we're looking forward to that. That's, uh, kinda, in my, is in my district, and it kinda borders with Mr. Scares's district. And I know Mr. Barksdale has said, and Mr. Davis's folks have used that quite a bit, so we're looking forward to the new.
I hope, I hope somebody from Marine Anne uses it somewhere.
They might get the book mobile. Expenditure refunds for June 2017, oh, we did that. Requests for surplus property, Old Northside High School.
No, no.
You need to, you skipped a line.
I'm sorry.
That's a difference.
Expenditure refunds for June twenty-seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, this is actually our first opportunity to appropriate expenditure refunds without a ten-day layover. If you remember, we changed our bylaws and increased the threshold, and in the FY twenty eighteen budget, we appropriated revenue to account for these expenditure refunds on a monthly basis. So, from here forward, unless the expenditure refunds are over a certain amount, and I don't remember that off the top of my head, we will be able to approve expenditure refunds on the same day as presented. So, this evening, you'll see a, I don't see a grand total in front of me, but you'll see a list of expenditure refunds.
Ten thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and forty-seven cents.
Oh, ten thousand four hundred and sixty forty-seven, thanks, sir. So, we're asking for your approval this evening to reappropriate those.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappropriate ten thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and forty-seven cents. It's listed in board packet page thirty-three.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Flippin.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Item ten, request to surplus property, Old Northside High School Football Center. Mr. Schmittelman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received two requests, letters of interest regarding a piece of property that formerly occupied the Northside High School. These two properties combined are about five acres and are on the tax books at fifty-one thousand four hundred dollars. We are asking the board to consider whether or not it would like to dispose of this property, and if you do desire to dispose of it, inform us as to the method by which you would like such done, and you'll carry that out.
Thank you, Mr. Schmittelman. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the county declare the property as surplus, and that it be disposed through auction with the highest bidder.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barksdale and seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
I think we probably need to direct the county staff that we want to reserve bid on that. Nobody shows up, and one person could end up selling it for a dollar.
Mr. Chairman, I will say one other thing. Now, we have, in the past, I know at least on one occasion, we didn't have an auction, we just, right, fully sold it to a business, so we might have, need some flexibility as we work through this.
Mr. Hunt, do we need to amend the motions, and if we go in fact, put a reserve on it, because that was not the original motion?
And it's the board's pleasure. Perhaps you could say the minimum would be assessed value as fifty-two thousand or something like that, fifty-one four hundred. That's just an idea, but it's ultimately your discretion.
Does that require a motion?
Yes, I think we should.
We'd have to amend the.
Take me a substitute motion, would you?
Take a substitute motion.
I'm getting it for the board's pleasure. Right now, it stands that we're going to sell it at auction regardless.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could the attorney state that make the statement, and I will make a substitute motion.
Okay. If it's the board's pleasure, you could make a motion to declare the property surplus and auction it with a reserve being the minimum that we will accept would be the current assessed value of the property.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a substitute motion according to the commentary from the attorney.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr., substitute motion made by Mr. Barksdale, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on substitute motion? All in favor of the substitute motion, raise your right hands. All opposed, raise your right hand. We've got one, six, one. Now, motion's back on the floor to declare it surplus and sell it.
I think we just did that.
Did it all?
Right. We just folded all of them.
Right.
Okay. Recommendations from personnel committees?
Thank you, District Chairman. On July twelfth, the Personnel Committee met and reviewed, or received a report from Springstead Incorporated and reviewed a pay classification compensation study. In there, there were several findings, there were many things we learned about how we compete and compare with neighboring jurisdictions and others that we compete for employees with, and we learned that our, in general, our pay structure was somewhat below market rate. We have discussed this at the Personnel Committee level, and as a result of that meeting, there is a resolution on page forty-seven of the packet that does three things. It is proposed that the board resolve that the supervisors accept and support the recommendation from the consultant, and that in a phased approach, the compensation of all employees will be brought at least to the minimum market standard, and that salary compression will be addressed by increasing salaries by an average of half, a half percent per year of annual service. It also resolves that the existing pay scale be changed to an open-range system consisting of thirty-five grades, and that associated position descriptions and classifications be associated with the new schedule. And finally, it directs staff to propose a merit-based performance evaluation and compensation system to be brought forward to the Personnel Committee for recommendation to the boards, for the board's review and approval at a later date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I am remiss at saying that in your packet is a outline of two different ways to phase in the cost of this study. We have revised those numbers since the printing of the packet, and we estimate the total impact of the study to be six hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars, and that includes the associated fringe benefit expenses. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Board's pleasure.
It doesn't require a motion because it comes with a recommendation?
All right. Requires another motion, comes from committee, so we just need a vote. All in favor of the recommendation, Personnel Committee, raise your right hand. Recommendations, if any, from the work session. Mr. Schmittelman.
I don't believe we have any, let me check my notes. I don't believe we have any recommendations for this evening, but we will be bringing one matter forward as a result of the work session at the August meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Schmittelman. Appointments. First one is Dammel Pennsylvania County Community Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lori Eames Brookes to serve as the Westover District Representative on the Dammel Pennsylvania Community Services Board for a three-year tour, tour, excuse me, beginning on July first, two thousand seventeen, until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. I've personally talked with Ms. Eames, and she's pretty excited about being on the board.
Give me a second. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Pittsman County Social Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, um, reappoint Joseph Joe Bray for a year term.
Mr. Barber's made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barber. This is in my district, and that obviously, as chairman, I can't make a recommendation, so that's why we were a little. Any discussion on Mr. Bray? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Pittsman County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Ms. Portia Fitzgerald to represent Banister District on the Pittsman County Public Board, Public Library Board.
Motion made by Mr. Barksdale, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we've got another one for Pittsman County Public Library Board of Trustees.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I have nominated York Pilsen to serve as the Callens Gritten Representative on the Pittsman County Public Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term beginning July the first, two thousand seventeen. And I'd like to continue with that nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hagerman, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Southern Area Agency on Aging.
Has anybody contacted Anita White?
Yes, yes.
And she's willing to serve? Yes, she's willing to serve. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Anita White.
That's White's here.
I don't think you're from my district, but I'm gonna try to get it done.
There you go. This is that long.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Anita White, uh, served, nominated to serve as Pittsman County Representative on the Southern Area Agency on Aging's Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Ms. White, you're willing to serve.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Dammel Pennsylvania County Tourism Board.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make this motion, this was the one I thought I was supposed to make in the first place, sorry for the delay. In a perfect world, I would get it perfectly, but I don't quite do that. But anyway, I want to nominate Ms. Megan K. Barker to serve as the Pittsman County Representative on the Dammel Pennsylvania County Tourism Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion? All in favor of Ms. Baker, raise your right hands. It's unanimous. I thank each and every one of you for your willingness to serve, as does the entire board. We appreciate you getting active and serving on these boards and moving the county forward. We'll move to board announcements. We will start this time with Mr. Barksdale.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale, Mr. Davis.
Nothing.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blackstock.
I'm looking for the date that we go and christen the animal shelter over there. I want to make sure, twenty-ninth. Want to invite everybody over, I know it's a Saturday, Saturday the twenty-ninth for the grand opening of the new animal shelter. I'm excited about it. I know the citizens of the county are, county are, and it's been a long road to get that done, but we've accomplished something, and I'm excited about it. See you there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have tonight is on September nineteenth, the Ruption Club at Climax is going to have their county-known sorghum festival, and for what it's worth, I'll be there, and hopefully, hopefully Amy's going to be there, Mrs. Bowman's going to be there. Well, everybody in here should be there, so anyway, it's going to be, going to be a great time, going to, well, the food is always awesome, so I sure make up for that. But anyway, try to, try to make it, I guarantee you'll have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman.
I have none.
Thank you. As chair, I just, Mr. Blackstock already mentioned the animal shelter, I certainly do hope everyone will be there, and I'm sure myself and my family's going to be there. We're excited about the future of the animal shelter and the animals in Pittsman County. Think it's a great move for the county. Secondly, I did see Mr. Pace back there from Chatham Town Council, we appreciate you being here, and also want to welcome, and I see that we have a couple of the candidates that are up to running for the board, Mr. Palmer and Ms. Hancock's here, we appreciate you, they were also at the work session, and we appreciate you coming, looking forward to you running, and it's always an interesting endeavor, and we need people willing to serve, so thanks to both of you. And also want to take opportunity to thank staff. It's been a long time since our last meeting, but they have been very diligent and been working very hard, and I want to thank this entire board for your service and the way you've handled yourself and carried yourself the entire year, but in particular, the last thirty days or so, so my hat's off to you. You're a group of professionals, and it's wonderful to serve with you. That's all I have. Reports from county administrator?
Yes, sir. We'll reiterate how excited we are about the twenty-ninth at noon. We will be cutting the ribbon for the pet center, and look forward to seeing everybody there. I was, I dropped by this morning, because it was first full day of having animals in the center yesterday, and it was amazing to me how much those dogs can do overnight. They have thirteen employees working at the Pittsman Pet Center, and it must take every single one of them to make that thing operate, and I'm so excited and proud of what they're doing down there, and I congratulate them on their great work. And I appreciate Steve East saying what he did about modernizing animal control services, and nothing has changed with regard to that endeavor. We have best friends coming in, a nonprofit group, to help us design a modern and responsive animal control effort. They'll be in, I think, the second week of August, so we'll be getting some great resources from National Resources coming in for a multi-day visit to help us modernize our animal control fieldwork. Happy to say that, as far as I know, as anybody's told me, we're going to have our first all-employee meeting a week from Thursday. We'll have two sessions, and we're having all of our full-time employees convene, and we're going to talk about what's going on internal to the organization, and where we're going to take this county with the leadership of the board and communicate the vision of this board, and how we as employees will endeavor to fulfill that vision. So, we're excited about that coming up in a week. And finally, I want to say heartfelt congratulations and thanks to Otis Hawker, who has announced his resignation after thirty years with the county. We are going to plan a celebration for Otis, with Otis and his family coming up in the next few weeks, and we will keep the board apprised on that event, but we look forward to celebrating with Otis, and that's all I have.
We don't want to start any rumors. His announcement is a retirement, not resignation.
Oh, well.
It's already enough, A, there's enough rumors on the internet.
Retirement.
Retirement.
Big difference.
Thirty years, thirty years.
Would you like to mention the state of the region?
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Flippin. The state of the region is Tuesday, seven-thirty at the Institute, seven-thirty a.m. It is, uh, gonna, gonna be a little change to it this time, so please stay tuned, and hope all of you can be there. I think it'll be an exciting time, so I don't want to let the kid out of bag about everything's going on, but it should be very exciting, and certainly hope everyone will attend. Mr. Hunt, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll get a motion to, for a closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into closed session.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Being resolved that at the work, at the business meeting of the Pittsman County Board Supervisor on Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, the board hereby certified by reported vote that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and-- exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so stay prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. I will now do a roll call. Mr. Barber? Yes. Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?